The meeting of the Armita Village zoning board of appeals will come to order. A little ready rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Russ, please call the roll.
Vanu?
Here.
St. John?
Here.
DePaulma?
Here.
Patterson?
Here.
Belkey is here. All right.
Okay. We have an agenda before you. Has everybody had a chance to review it?
Yes.
Have any motions to approve the agenda as presented?
A motion?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, tonight we have a request for variance for Mr. Tom and Heidi Mackey on a East May carport. I think everyone's had a chance to review the application. So we'll be going over that tonight. So we'll have to have the applicant approve a hardship to the board. So in a minute, we'll have you do that. Do you have, maybe you want to start with your comments?
Why don't you go through the...
Oh, yeah, if you want to start.
Just to orient the board members on all the paperwork we've got in front of you. You've got, obviously, the agenda for tonight's meeting. You've got the appeal application from Tom and Heidi. You've got the code enforcement report where Tom Urban has recommended that these folks come before the ZDA. You've got by ZDA appeal, write-up and analysis. You've got some pictures. I meant to provide in my packet a copy of the dimensional standards, Article 5, which Dennis has provided tonight, so he nailed me on that one. And then, kind of off on the side, you've got a copy of the meeting minutes from the last zoning board meeting that we will approve after the appeal is done. Questions about all of the paperwork? Okay.
So if the applicant wants, would like to make comments about your appeal, why you're requesting it, what's the hardship?
Well, I'm requesting the appeal...
Yes, I'm sorry. You need to make a motion to go into the public hearing for this?
Okay, make a motion to go into the public hearing? Anybody make a motion to do that? Oh, yes. So move to the open public hearing at 7:03?
Okay, it was, just want to make sure I get this. St. John and DePaulma.
All those in favor? Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Public hearing started at 7:03. Okay, we have, go ahead, you can start your making comments.
When I started, prior to me building this carport, I had called up the village, I talked about it. She got me in contact with Gary, the building inspector. I contacted Gary, told him exactly what I was going to do. Asked him, you know, as far as placements, where I could put this thing. I lined it up with the old garage structure that was there that I'd taken down, that was behind the house. All the supports were in line. He says that would be fine. Take pictures of what you're doing, send me the pictures, everything would work out fine. And pull the permit, which I did not get around to pulling the permit as of yet. So I put the structure up over the weekend, had everything set, took my pictures, and before I got to pull the permit, I received notice that I had to take it down. From, I believe it was Tom Urban. Prior to that, I had put quite a bit of money into this. Labor materials, weathered it in. And since then, it's just been sitting. You know, it's still protected from the weather, but maybe the misunderstanding was going through and not pulling the permit prior. But the verbal approval I got from Gary was, go ahead and do it. And thinking, he's a village official, I can't go wrong. I knew I was building it structurally sound. So I guess I'm asking for the appeal to proceed and be able to finish it as if, I guess the commission needs me to make minimal changes to where I don't have to change the structural on it. I would appreciate that. And, you know, I spoke to my neighbors, and they had no issue with it. So I'd like to, might could proceed with finishing it.
Comments for...
Yeah, in a minute. Anybody, anybody on the board have any questions? For the applicant?
I, I guess I would. You made a comment about putting in a permit. So as a zone community, we, these people would come in and provide a site plan depending upon what the, what the structure's going to be, or what they're intending to do, whether it be a fence, or in addition to a house, or a carport in this case. We view this as a carport. One of the purposes of the site plan is so that the building inspector can completely look at what the intent is behind this, and where it's going to sit in the property. And then, by referencing the zoning ordinance, determine whether or not it meets zoning ordinance requirements. And the problem here is it does not. It does not by six feet. And so, as I understand it, I don't know, by talking to Gary at this point, but as I understand it, he's indicated that he did not tell you that it was okay. So we wind our, wind up getting into a bit of a he said, she said situation.
He actually has a text message that said he approved it.
Do you have a copy of that with you?
I probably have it on my phone.
And he approved the, everything.
He approved the drawing, the rough, the final.
Is that the, is that the drawing that's depicted on the appeal here?
Was it all by email between you and Gary, or anything written?
It was text messages and pictures. We have done so much work, you know, and done everything and never had, I mean, going back and forth, that's what, we're kind of on a different basis, because we, it wasn't just like we just did one thing, we didn't do them at the...
No, Sam.
And also, we did a pool and did all that as well in the back, and didn't have any problems.
Is there a way we can get a copy of this?
Sure. I have not. I approve the construction, variance in their court.
So a problem that we have here, I mean, so I appreciate seeing the message that provides a little bit of information to us.
Because we have followed everything, I mean, obviously, I mean, I think we doubled the house in size, and we followed everything, new windows, new floor, and then we put the pool on, we've done everything, and then this is what we were told to do for this. And maybe it was a mis, I mean, obviously, it was a misunderstanding, or whatever, but it's, we've, we've done everything, the permit, the money, everything that we've, you know, in the past, since we've been here in 2015, to make improvements to the house and the area, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody on the board has a concern about the...
I mean, we weren't trying to not do the rules.
...quality construction, so that's the unfortunate piece here.
If I had any indication from speaking to Gary that this would not be a goal, I wouldn't put a dollar in for it.
Yeah.
It's right on Main Street, so I know it's going to be seen. Without the verbal consent from him, I wouldn't even approach that. It's not like I was trying to sneak a shed in the backyard or anything, it was like...
No, no, and I don't think anybody thinks that. It's just that, I'm, I'm a little surprised, because it's, it's clearly not according to the requirements. I mean, by, by six feet. And I'm a little troubled by him to say he's approved the construction, and I don't recall the exact wording, but what's it say about the variance down there at the bottom?
It says, "I've approved construction, the variance is in their court."
That's not how it works, so that's, that's the problem.
Well, that's, but I mean, but that's what we heard, that's what he said now, if it was already up, after we already talked to him, we built it, and then he said it was fine. So now, it's like, kind of backpedaling, but he did say he approved it. And, yeah.
Tell me the other members of the audience?
If, if the public wants to make a comment, yeah.
I'm, I'm the direct neighbor where this carport comes up to my property line. He discussed it with me beforehand, I didn't have a problem with it, I still don't. So that's about all I can say on it. I mean, I thought he did a good job, and he did it quick. Then all of a sudden, it stopped, and it looks atrocious, because it's not finished, you know?
Well, yeah, there's a discrepancy somewhere here between, I mean, even the code enforcer has said, cease and desist, because you're not, you're not following the zoning ordinance.
Well, he also said that there's a, he said, "I know you can look out your window and stand here and see 15 people, or 15 code violations, but I only can do on the ones that I'm called on." And that's why, that's what he said, and that what, and you know if you stand in our driveway, and you look, I mean, just down the street.
It's a screenshot, right to your house.
But he said that I can only do the ones that I'm called on. And then that's when, so, he didn't, so somebody called and complained, or whatever. I mean, we thought we were doing everything, like I said, just like we had done everything else correctly, and, and, you know, and then, then all of this stuff happened, so.
How, how much trouble would it be to cut it back, so it's six feet away?
Cut it six feet away, I would have poles right in center of my driveway.
But I'm just asking the question, because do you ever bring in compliance with the ordinance?
We have a shared driveway, and I have a, I put up years ago a six-foot privacy fence. That was, of course, you know, there's permits pulled, it was done by Home Depot, but, so it's just a shared driveway, there's...
Right.
And they only have, they're part of the driveway between where my fence is and their house, they can fit their car in there. If they pull that, pull that back six feet, they're not going to be able to park anything there, so a bicycle.
It's, it's pretty obvious. Are you, I'm just curious, are you, you say it's a shared driveway, is there not a lot lane?
Well, I had it, I had it surveyed before we put the fence up. And I put the fence just inside of my property line, which was agreeable to both of us, and, but yeah, there's a, there's a marker, which basically is where the cement is cut, going back, I think.
Right. I mean, we didn't...
But yeah, there's a, there's property markers.
Okay. We do have pictures that I've taken of it, trying to understand. We didn't go on private property to see where property lines were, or anything, so these are all from the street, but that was a question that I had, was, was the fence right on the property line?
No, it was just, just inside of my property line, correct.
And the zoning ordinance says, with the permission of your neighbor, you could put it on the property line, but...
Right.
Most, most times, people put it six inches over onto their side.
Yeah.
So there's no arguments, right? And so now, I think it's about 12 inches away from the property line, give or take, where you've got the stanchions. Okay. Thanks for that. I'd like to get other comments, if there's any.
Any other public comments?
Well, we live on the other side, and so it doesn't have any problem with us. But if they're okay with my black walnut tree?
Could we have that?
Loves the shares black walnuts with all of us. Well, the squirrels tell me.
I'm sorry, there was a misunderstanding. It seems that's all there was, and hopefully, you know, between the board and you guys, this can come to an agreement. I don't know how these things pan out.
Part of our, part of our problem is that they adopted an ordinance, and it does show clearly six-foot minimum, and a 16-feet total between the two sides, so how do we resolve that? You know, you've got this structure which looks fine, no doubt, but it's not a compliant. So how do we resolve that issue?
Yeah, the, a lot of people have a misunderstanding about the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals is here to, to really uphold and follow the zoning ordinance of the village. We're not, we're not here to give permissions to people that have gone and done something that is out of variance, unless they can prove that there was a hardship of some type, or a material difficulty that was not of their making. So in this case, guys, I would, you know, I, I wish you had followed the, the letter of the zoning ordinance, which says, present a site plan, get a readout from the building inspector, and the building inspector's supposed to be looking at the zoning ordinance. But there's another, there's another piece of it, which says, where there was an error in interpretation. And, I don't know, I got to hear what other people here think, but, you know, the building inspector should not have told you it was okay. And he should not have told you, this is, this is me talking, right? He should not have told you it was okay, and he should have not have said, you got to deal with the variance by going to somebody else. That's not how it works. And the code enforcer should not be waiting for somebody to call on the bat phone and say, "Hey, I got a problem." Code enforcer should be looking for issues, because, as you say, some of them are out there. Now, we're not looking to do penny ante stuff, but when there's a clear problem, they should be drawing it to somebody's attention. I mean, you don't want to be calling the village up about six-foot weeds next door, because somebody's not cut their grass. Code enforcer should see that and take action on it when it's four feet, or three feet, or two feet.
Well, we do have a clause for someone who's like that all year.
Right?
Yeah, like, so, and we've never called.
Yeah, well, and you should, you should.
Since 2015, it's, that's what we look at every day.
Yeah, you should.
But let's stay on what you're talking about. Those are other issues, and that they're fine to bring up, and let's, on yours, let's stick with...
Well, no, that's, I didn't bring it up, people.
Yeah.
I didn't bring it up.
What I'm saying is, is, on its face, and we're going to have some more discussion here when we close the meeting, after we hear any other comments, on its, on its face, it's, it's clearly in violation. The issue that's coming up now, and so I really do want a copy of that.
Dennis should have it on his phone right now.
Okay. Because something's falling apart here. He should not have given you that clearance to do the construction. I mean, the building, the carport itself might have been fine from a construction standpoint, but it's clearly in violation, so I, I don't know how he could miss it. And then, you don't really say, "Deal with that with other people." That's not how it works.
Well, he didn't say that at the beginning, he said that now, when all this was going on. At the beginning, he said he approved it, just like he says, and he approved everything, we told him exactly what we're going to do, we took pictures of what we were doing, and sent, and he had all that. He didn't waver on the variance until now. He said, "I approved everything." And then, now, he's like, "But the variance is in their hands." Well, if he would have said that, when we, when we called you in the beginning, we wouldn't have done, I mean, I mean, we would have gone, we would have done what he told us to do, like we had done on everything, all the other improvements that we've made on the house.
Yeah. If it, if it had worked the way it should have, he would have said, "Okay, I'm looking at your plan, this will not work this way. I appreciate the fact that you won't be able to do what you want to do, but you can't do it this way."
Right, like, that would have been wonderful, if he would have said that.
Where would he sit in here?
Correct, if he was like, "Okay."
Isn't these things done in writing?
Well, they should be, they're supposed to be.
Normally, you would have a sketch presented to you, or a set of plans, and you'd review those, and then sign off on, say, "Yeah, this is fine," or "That's not." And then they'd go ahead and draw formal plans.
So everything's documented?
Yeah. That, that's the normal way. Did you have any questions?
At that same conversation that they just said they had with the code enforcer, he liked the, the drawing, he liked the...
I think it was the building inspector.
Carport. It was the building inspector. He said, "I'm good, but you need to go pull a permit," in that same conversation. When did they pull a permit?
I, right.
Well, we had tried, and they sent the check back, right up...
Well, that was for the first ZDA appeal. But I think I tried to come in and pull a permit, it might have been, maybe a month later.
And I guess maybe we did get comfortable with everything, because like I said, we had really, we had built relationships with everybody, and doing what we've done, and, and so, I mean, like, again, if they would have said, "That doesn't work," we wouldn't have put it up, like, we live on Main Street, and weren't trying to sneak anything up.
Yeah.
And everything we've done, we've done, even when they called about our pool, and was like, "You can't not be swimming in the pool, this is whatever." I'm like, "Well, we..." That was the pool people pulled, pulled all the permits, everything's above board, I mean, they didn't put any, I mean, we did everything we were supposed to, and that's why Tom, and being about like they were talking on the phone and texting back and forth, it was, a relationship had been built since, well, I think we started with you.
Yeah, with the addition.
Like, when we first started, you know, doing everything with the addition.
Oh, when you put your addition in.
Right, yeah, and so, I mean, that we build relationships, and then we retired, and then the new guy was on, and we just, you know, that's, I mean, because we really haven't stopped doing anything, and then this was the last.
That's partially my concern, is they were told they need to pull a permit, which I understand he's a builder, and should know that right from the get-go, and didn't, and continued to build, and now...
Actually, I, actually, I halted building.
For a short time, but you finished before you pulled a permit.
It is not finished.
Well, you continue to the point that it's at.
No, we just did that in like one week, and that was built.
It got to that point on the weekend.
And then he was coming in on, on the week, because you guys are only, you know, with the opening, and we had done that before.
I think I tried to come in on a Friday at like 1:00.
Yeah.
Do we have any more public comments?
Well, I have a question. What is the purpose for the six-foot rule? Is that to avoid confrontation with your neighbor? Or is there, is there some sort of...
Historically, it's because it's fire code. They don't want coming so close to each other in residential settings. That's one of the reasons for it.
I got you.
Access for fire department.
Okay, I was just curious, because if it had to do with, with the homeowner directly adjacent to it, that's me, and I know I don't approve stuff here, but I'm fine with what they did.
Right. I appreciate that.
Part of the, part of the problem comes in, in that we've had other people that have also built things not in, to, in code, and we have forced them to take things down.
Somebody recently got a fence installed, and the company that installed the fence didn't follow code, they had to redo, had to redo it. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't go to the village, they went to the township. They put the fence up, and they had, they could redo it.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have to consider that, we, okay.
So any more public comments? Input on this? No? Okay, we can close the public hearing at 7:26.
Get a motion for that.
Do we have a motion for that?
Move to close the public hearing, the ZDA, at 7:26.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, close at 7:26.
One second. And a place secretary too will catch all this, so that was Patterson, and was it Vanu?
All set? Russ?
Yeah.
So any discussion on the board? Comments? Questions?
This one is painful, because on its face, I would, I would reject it, and say, "Sorry, good structure, looks great, can't do it." This is where, now, I'm, I'm seeing things that, one of the reasons why we wanted that paperwork, is I'm seeing comments that lead me to believe that there is tacit approvals here, and so, there may have been a failure on the part of the village to follow its own process. There's a failure on the part of the homeowner to follow the process, but there appears to have been a, an issue with the village too, and...
But I tend to be more on the side of, there's a process, you have to follow the process.
Well, yeah.
And if you don't, you let it go here, well, you're going to have to let it go the next time, or the next time.
Yeah.
We did speak to attorney, and then, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
We closed the public hearing, so...
Well, we can back up afterwards. We're just having a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, okay.
This is our person.
I mean, it's nice that, you know, everybody's, you know, came out to speak for you, and that's, that's wonderful. And, but, you know, we have systems in place, I'm just one of those people where it's like, you got to, you got to follow the structure, otherwise things start going to...
It is kind of...
That's why we came up with, that's why the rules were come up with in the first place.
Yeah, if we approved into the variant, into the setback, so who's going to say, who's going to do what he got next? We set the precedent a long way in.
I don't like this situation either.
Yeah.
It does look...
That's a tough one. That's why I asked a question, if there's any other options they have, if they could cut it back to the six-foot. You know, I know it wouldn't work right, but that, that's a problem. That's one alternative. Any more discussion? Anybody?
It all revolves around basically the permit issue. So the permit paperwork going through, then somebody went over it, saw the measurements and inspection of it, and said basically, "No, it's too close per fire code, per feet between, you know, the space too."
Or they wouldn't have caught it and said, "Yes, then you'd have, you'd fail second."
Yeah, yeah. Should we have any motions from the floor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to take this from here. A bit conflicted. Yeah, clearly, a permit should have, you know, site plan should have been submitted, was submitted, was submitted after the fact. And it sounds like construction was, was very quickly done, which is, which is fine, but, yeah, it, it had a violation in it. This is where we needed that, that paperwork. In talking to Becky, she indicated that the appellant's came in after the fact and submitted a permit. Suggested that they knew it was in violation. But they were, they, they were talking to, talking to Becky, Tom, Gary, village council president. I know you guys came in and addressed a council meeting a while back. I know you guys came in and addressed the council meeting a while back. Other thoughts? Trying to think of the best way to handle this. I do have to kind of go back.
The construction permit was given, was told they had to pull a permit before construction was approved.
I, I don't, I don't know for sure on that. I just understood that the, the building had gone up or the structure had gone up, carport accessory structure had gone up before permit was provided to the village if, a site plan. And then get your permit. Once the site plan is reviewed and approved for location and type construction and so on. And that was not done. It was after the fact that it was submitted. And that's the principal, that's the principal issues that I incited is process wasn't followed, so the appropriate approvals were not given when they could have been given or denied, when they could have been denied, so that these folks didn't have to put money and time and effort into doing it because they would have been told, can't do it that way, come up with a plan B. And then continue the discussion on after that about, you know, what do you do with it? Which is why Tom said he didn't finish it. It's not finished. It's a facial of it and see that it's not been completed. But it's predominantly there.
Comments, motions?
Just reading miracle one with the, hey, with the building permits, that's what really keeps chugging on.
Well, it's the site plan and the building program. I mean, that's the, that's the lead edge of the process.
Village, building inspector should have been.
Well, but if these folks didn't provide one to start.
Yeah, that he initially talked to and then saying, go ahead and build. Somehow it should have came back around to the building inspector and have the permit. That's what my question is about. I'm just reading here and trying to figure it out.
Well, the simple fact is that that's, that's the procedure. You have to pull the site plan, you have to pull a permit. That has to get the permit and move forward.
Well, and I'm kind of stuck on the fact that he is a builder, does know the process. And he admitted fully that he just didn't own it and pulled him permit until after he almost completed construction.
Yeah. All right.
So, we've discussed the facts. What's our conclusion? Any more facts that we can look at?
I, I, did you want to ask any, allow any more questions here? Reopen public hearing or?
You intend you would answer?
Yeah, I mean, after we make a decision. Or you want to open it back up?
Well, just.
We can be, we can be.
You might have had a question or comment that had merit before we made a decision.
Any more comments?
Yeah, well, like she just said, I am a builder and I have relationships with inspectors all the time. And a lot of times it isn't just cut and dry, there isn't just a process. A lot of times stuff just happens, but then after the fact, it just gets put together. Which is typically on all job sites. It's not just a cut and dry, black and white process. Like I call a village official, right? Gary Mortos, village official. Go ahead and do it. It'll be fine. The process stopped right there. Guys there, building went up. I was going to pull a permit, denied. That's how the process went.
That's not how it's supposed to.
No, it's not. Does Gary know that's how it goes?
I don't know.
But Gary should have said, don't do it until you pull the permit. Don't take the pictures. Don't dig holes. Don't quit the post.
Well, we had lots of text messages and conversations and conversations. That's why when we said about the attorney, the attorney is like, well, he is a village official. So, if the village official tells you it's a go, it's a go. And the village hours are not always applicable to work hours when you're working or different things like that. And, and yes, so, you know, so stuff like that. And we had done so much work and with that, and then saying, go take the pictures, do the stuff. And that's, we did exactly what he told us to do. So, and then, and we had done, just like we had done, like I said, we've been building on the house since 2015. When we bought, or 2016, I think we started. And we've done, did, I mean, so it's, it's just, yeah, I don't know.
I understand what you're saying about the, go ahead.
It falls back to the permit being.
Right, so you didn't do what he told you to do. He told you to pull a permit.
He said you could start, that you could.
You go start it, take pictures and pull a permit.
At that point, then you know you're taking the risk that the permit could be denied.
Well, if I got, if I got approval from the city official, why would that be a risk? If I told him exactly where that's gonna be.
And that's what they look for, being in a permit. I had my roof redone and first thing the guy said was, well, I gotta pull a permit, it's gonna cost you this amount of money. The guys came out, then we did the roof, and a permit, I locked the door. As long as that permit.
Yeah. I, I would just tell you that it's my understanding that Gary has said it didn't happen that way, so.
Well, Gary also said he didn't remember having phone conversations, so then we had to pull it up and remind him that he did have the conversation. Now he's totally bad at it.
Well, that's why I'd like to.
We had to go, well, you know, this isn't 1985. We can look and this was your phone number on this day and we talked to you and these are the text messages we have.
Do you have?
So, you know, I mean.
We're all having problems with Gary right now.
I think folks.
Yeah, so, I mean, why would we do, I mean, put all this money in, we're trying to, I just.
That's, that's why this is a, this is a tough one because it's a, it's a nice looking structure, it's quality built. You appreciate the time and effort. Process, process wasn't followed. But I'm, just tell the board, I'm a little disturbed about potentially some of the conversations. And so, you guys started, what, in the fall of 2022? October, November 2022? I understood this kind of came up as an issue February of '23.
I talked to Gary, I think it was December 15th. The structure went up December 16th.
Okay. Okay. And you've got text messages? All right. So, here, here's a thought.
I brought all this stuff into the, the village, that one village council meeting, I think. And the president said, you know, talk to Gary, or, and, yeah, it was fine then. The reason, the reason I didn't pay any more money for it then was because I was waiting from something from you guys.
And that's why it makes it tough because, and, and, and we have indicated our displeasure to other officials by saying it took entirely too long to give you a definitive answer on this. The answer should have been, no, you can't do it. And now there's the issue of all these potential email messages. So, a consideration for the board here is I'd like to see these messages, if you guys can produce them. On the, at the same time, we've asked some of these officials for a, what do I call it? I can't remember. Statement of, what's, what do they call it? Statement for record, sorry, I'm having a break there. Statement for record where they say, okay, here's, here's all that's happened here. We haven't gotten those. That doesn't mean it's anything nefarious. Both Gary and Tom have had surgery recently and may not have been able to get to it. But we don't have those statements. Something we can do is, is stay this and have a follow-on meeting once we get all that material, your information. We can't guarantee you anything, guys. But we want to, we try to be as fair as we can. We hate to get into a situation like this because somebody's gonna get hurt out of it. As I say, we, we, we have to consider other people in the village that we've told take stuff down because it's in violation. This is clearly in violation and.
But did the building inspector tell them it was okay to do it?
I, I don't, I don't know. The building inspector, I hear you.
Like ours did. And when you do, so, like if somebody does a roof and they come out and they do one project, they do it and they pull. When you're getting multiple things done, and we, like I said, multiple things, on this house, these same people, I mean, they've changed a little bit over the years. But dealing with all the same people and, and, and.
Yeah. No, I got you. But the, but the, the reason for the site plan process is, is you submit that and then you.
Well, now we know that now, that you're explaining it to us. If he would have said that then.
Well, I, but I would have thought you guys would have pulled,
if we tell you exactly where this was going. Exactly where the old garage was. It's actually further towards the house than the old garage.
Well, the old garage may have been, that structure might have been grandfathered, but any new.
But the overhang on that old garage was actually over these huts. So, that's why I told Gary, this is where this is going. It's in line with that old garage hang and closer to the house by six inches. So, further off the property line. He says, yes, that would be fine. Take your pictures and pull your permit.
See, that's, that's why, that's why I gotta see that. I gotta see that material. So, I gotta ask you to produce that. Subject to Dennis saying, produce it. I mean, he's the boss. But I would like to see it. There's, you know, that old structure may have been non-compliant forever, but it's, it, it's grandfathered in because it's been up for so long and nothing had ever been done about it. And, and so, it's tough to come to somebody and look at an old structure that's been there since 1900 and say, this is out of whack, you gotta take it out of here.
Well, the garage wasn't old, like in the 90s or something. It wasn't, well, it was just a, you know, or whatever.
Probably shouldn't have done something back then too. I can't speak for that, but.
Is the code coming after that?
Well, the code's been, the code's been out there and then the code gets updated. In fact,
zoning ordinance has been out since about 75, so prior to that.
Yeah, but they get, they get, well, if this was put up in the 90s, then it was whatever the, whatever the ordinance was at that time. And it may have given allowances for that, but over time, things change for various reasons. These guys, Christie is the chair of the planning commission, she's also the liaison to the board here. And they're going through a review right now of the zoning ordinance and they're making subtle changes based upon things changing in society, things changing in building codes, things change. So, they're making subtle changes. But I don't want to get too far off the track. I don't know why the old structure was allowed to be that way. We're talking about the new structure and, and, so, just here, I'm just concerned that the building inspector and the code enforcer now as we're talking to you guys may have given tacit permissions on things that they should not have. Because their job is to follow the zoning ordinance, period. Not to wing it.
And that's kind of our dilemma. We see the zoning ordinance, go, it doesn't fit. So, we, you know, right off the bat, you could say, well, we have to deny it.
And, and that is cut and dry.
Right.
That's why I made the phone call.
Right. And it's, it's too bad we didn't have a copy of the building permit. Because apparently there was none ever pulled. So, that's kind of a, that's not even a good thing either.
So, there's, there's failures on, potentially failures on both sides. And so, I don't know without seeing their text messages and seeing the write-ups by these other guys, which we've asked for, but we don't have, that we necessarily have enough information at this point to make a decision. Or do you? I mean, I'm just.
Anybody care to make a motion or are we deadlocked here?
Still concerned with the hearsay that's going on.
Well, that's right. I'd like to see.
That's what's making it difficult is that.
Like to see things.
We were not aware of the text messages that they were able to produce tonight. You know, we were told that they just couldn't do this, you know, these are the ordinances and that's that. We never gave approval, but they have proofs that they were given somewhat of an approval.
Or told it was okay.
The glitch is still the permit. It's.
Well, I mean, that's one way to look at it, that, that right at the beginning, the process did not get followed. Although, one other, we get complaints a lot of times because we not, we don't move fast enough to look at site plans. And it takes too long. Well, there's a reason why it takes a while.
Right.
Because you do have to go through the ordinance book and try to find specifics on side yard setbacks. And there's information in there about how much of an overhang you can have and overhangs are allowed.
If he would have said any of that, we would have waited. We just, we just waited, just like we did, we did. I mean, anything you asked from us or however, when we were working with you, we did everything then that we thought that that's.
Right, that's not a problem. That would be one issue with that.
But I'm just saying that we've set precedent that we've had, that we've done everything that we were supposed to, we thought we were supposed to. And, I mean, obviously there was a failure here, but it was because we thought we were doing what we needed to do. Just like we had done with the other parts of the house, with the pool or everything.
So, are we considering, well, this hardship? You know, hardship because there was a, just, you know, is that how we're gonna view this now?
I, I'm looking at it, you know, when I talked about what our job is, I said, one of the issues is errors and interpretation. And so, it could be that the building inspector read the ordinance book, book wrong and got something wrong and gave you an okay. It's much easier if he's got it on a piece of paper, because now, like I say, it's he said, she said. And Gary and Tom kind of refute some of the stuff that you've said, but you are saying, I've got text messages. So, that's why I say, I'd really like to see the text messages. Because if they're, if they're on there agreeing to things and, and telling us that they didn't say that, well, I would tend to believe you guys then. So.
Can I show you one right now from Gary? Sure. I sent it to you two minutes. Over here. Oh, it's prior.
Here are the hundred pictures. Tom, he's getting ready to write me a ticket. He said, I need to reach out to you, figure what we need to do to make it work. I approve the plans to build in the final, it's a village call from here. What does that mean? Okay, thanks. So, we'll go through what, is there anything more than that?
Whatever changes we were gonna make.
Okay.
I just took a picture, that's the send it to you.
We never really had a sketch that you sketched out and he signed off on that, like a physical copy?
Yeah. Yeah, here's my correspondence with Gary.
I'll send you an email now and check with Becky tomorrow.
They might let us do. So, until we have any paperwork from Gary and Zola.
There's no statement from that or anything like that.
Whatever printout of these text messages. You need to get all that through the first before you make any decisions.
Well, do you guys want more, more information? Do you want?
Why is the building inspector not here?
He had knee surgery, I guess, a couple weeks ago. We did ask him for comments have been about, about this case and we haven't received anything. We did ask him for comments have been about, about this case and we haven't received anything.
So that's, we're gonna take care of that in a minute because that's an issue. So initially going into this, this, again, this is just me. I felt it was pretty cut and dry, but now there's some potential mitigating circumstances that, that I would like to investigate. I don't know about the rest of these guys, but I want to get a couple of data points. So I think you said town was 14 December when you...
Talked to Gary. I believe it was the 14th or 15th.
We can get all the dates. We can get the exact dates.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna need the dates because, because again, I mean, I would say the first thing you should have done, the first thing that he should have said is, I need a site plan. But you guys were saying, we gave him a site plan, we gave him a plan. And he said, you guys were okay. And it sounds...
Yeah, I gave him a verbal synopsis of what was gonna happen in the driveway. And he says, that was, that was fine, take pictures and then pull permit.
You see, he should have said, stop, cease and desist, do a site plan, follow the process. If you follow the process, everything would have worked itself out. There would have been no issues. It's where you freelance and don't follow the process. And I appreciate what you're saying about, you know, builders working with code enforcers and building inspectors and ninety-nine times out of a hundred, they're all on track with what the requirements are, so there's no issue. Clearly there is, we're not on track with what the requirements are. I don't know what the rest of the board feel. If you're amenable to a little bit more time, I don't, this will be interesting. Looking at Joe back here, because Joe used to be the ZBA secretary for a long period of time and is knowledgeable on some of this. So does this require another public?
Nothing requires another public hearing. A ZBA meeting will still have to be a public hearing because he's asking for a variance. So you'll need the time to get the mail result.
So we would, we would, I would think in that case that we would send out follow-on mailings to everybody and say that the case was continued to this date pending finding more information or doing some more investigation.
What more information are we gonna get? What more information are we gonna get?
Gonna get, you guys are gonna provide your emails that corroborate your version that you were given approvals by the building inspector to go ahead without a site plan. We're gonna get statements from these other guys, which we should have had already. Gonna get statements from them that indicate their side of the story. Now, we've got, we've got comments from some of these people that know that your version is wrong. So it puts us in a bad position. There's a, there's a tenet of zoning law that says you, you side with the property owner if there's, if you can't determine who did what. So that's, again, I'm not saying we're gonna side with you, but we, we gotta get some more information and that appears that there might have been, as I say, errors in interpretation on the side of the village. If that's proven, then you may be allowed to keep it up. If it's not proven to our satisfaction, we would then direct you guys to take it down or adjust it so it's in compliance. That's the, that's the magic word, adjust it so it's in compliance. But I'm doing a lot of talking. What are the rest of you guys? I mean, I want to try to be as fair as we can and that's, that's our, part of our job too, in addition to complying with this zoning ordinance. What their task is, is come in and say why there's a hardship or a material difficulty. I don't think there's any material difficulty here. The hardship, I don't know that there's a hardship. I think there's an interpretation. If you were given approval when you shouldn't have been given approval, that may be a mitigating circumstance that allows you to keep it. We just wanna, we're trying hard to do the right thing for the village, like you guys as well. So I don't know, thoughts?
Until we get all this other information together, that we have...
What is that, is that your perspective?
I mean, you... Until we get more information, I think we, or we beat this.
Would you, would you rather put it off? Make a motion to stop or do you want to make a decision tonight?
So you guys are saying that there's more information out there, so technically we should get more information.
So you're gonna wait till we get more information?
Joe, it's roughly...
That kind of general thought?
Roughly, I think 30 days, within 30 days.
You have a limit of 45 days to get their next ZBA schedule.
There's...
With no continuance in construction?
No.
So you wouldn't be able to...
Yeah, I'd say don't, don't put any more money or effort into it.
Decide not to make a vote tonight. You couldn't go forward on the...
Oh, no, we're not, we haven't touched it yet, no.
So we've gotta get, we've gotta get notices back out. We're gonna likely, it sounds like, continue this until we get information. I would ask you guys to give it to...
Would you like us to bring to, obviously before the meeting, so you guys can have...
Oh, absolutely.
Because we brought it to the township already, the meeting, because that's what we were told to do.
Township?
No, this is the village meeting.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Sorry, yeah, but we brought it out to the village too, yeah.
I would take the text messages, I'd put them in an envelope, I would address them to the ZBA chair directly and just bring it into the village and give it to Becky. Seal it, give it to him.
Yeah, drop it off to Becky, that would be good.
Put it all up and seal it. Seal it up and...
And then we'll try and get more information from Gary, get his statements.
Well, we will, we will.
But still, you know, still, like you said, the negative part of it is there's never a building permit. So, you know, that's, that's kind of a problem, right? So we're, how do we dress that? You know, he, he would have said, okay, well, it's, it's with compliance, okay, there's a permit. Well, he made, apparently he made an error on finding out that it didn't meet the zoning ordinance. So if he, if he said it was okay, he probably was an error. But if he did, he did he say it was okay? We have nothing in writing to say either way.
It sounds, yeah. Well, it sounds like he, he told you guys, you know, he, you described it, he said, yep, go ahead, you're good. After the fact, then you got, you know, that's the building inspector. After the fact, then the code enforcer comes in and says, hey, there's a problem.
Is that, is that dated, are they dated on your...
Yes, everything's dated.
Make sure we see all that, eh?
Yeah, it's, you probably see it on your phone right now.
Yeah.
When you, when you take a motion and everything out of it, there's a structure. You gotta follow the structure. You gotta pull the permit before you start moving forward. So there's, that's...
Yeah, I just, and I appreciate what you're saying, I just, I, on the other hand, if you got...
Village officials... I've got an old house, he's got an old house. We put a ton of money in this town on our houses, so we get it. And this is, you know, it's kind of annoying, there's one...
I'm just concerned that you got...
Somebody pointed you in the direction.
Village officials saying, go ahead and not follow them across.
Now we get to be the bad guys.
We're just straightening it up. Well, that's why last year I talked to you guys about sending their original request back in, what? June or something last year or May? We said, no, let the building department handle it. It looks like it's a violation, let them square it away. And that was never done.
It should have been, it should have been resolved a long time ago. And we, we tell people, do not come to us because you're spending money. Do not come to us unless you've got clear evidence that there was an issue before you started doing something or there was an error in the way it was interpreted. And we have had some, I mean, we have had some.
What I showed you guys tonight is, is, is clear. Gary said it was okay.
Well, we, we want to hear from them, so you're not here to defend himself. But, you know, the, the proof is in the paper, right? So give us that stuff and then, then we're gonna have to go to there and interpret, okay, who said what, when, where. We have asked them for specific timeline of their activities. It should not have taken a year and a half to get to this point. That's the problem. We've all expressed our displeasure with other people at the village about that. It doesn't mean that the, the time gives you a pass, but you shouldn't have to wait that long. And that's why Dennis said, hey, we, we really don't have a dog in this fight because at the time it appeared clear that there was a, you know, there was a violation. Well, there isn't the way it was built, but also a violation in the process. And so now I think we, we want to go back and investigate that a little bit and try to take the he said, she said, or he said, he said, and get something definitive out of it. So I, I don't know where it's gonna go, but is, is that acceptable to you guys? If we do a timeout here and we, we get this form of disinformation and then go back over it? I don't know what it's gonna, what it's gonna say, but...
So time-wise, Joe, we have 45 days from tonight?
From when they apply for their next variance.
Yeah, but I don't think we would, I'm gonna tell Becky that we're not charging them for it. I guess I can't say...
It's because you have to follow the village procedure. If they, if we have to charge, it's up to the village, not above.
Well, we can, we can waive it. This is a continuation, so we're not making a decision. So it's not their fault that they gotta come back.
We don't have enough information.
I, I...
So do we, do we want to make a motion? Somebody want to make a motion that we, we delay this until we get more information? Come back, I'd say, the 20th of March or some date like that?
Well, you can just say that you'll set the next ZBA hearing at the earliest possible date line.
But I want to put a timeline on it, so not have, strung out until April, you know?
Well, they'll get a copy of the, because the paperwork will go out right away. So they'll get a copy of that, they'll know what the date is for the next meeting.
I don't think we gotta put the, I don't think we gotta put the timing in the motion. I think we just, we just make, somebody here can make a motion that we continue the case pending additional information from the appellant and the village. And we'll set another, set another meeting to decide the case.
Anybody want to make that motion? Should we write, should we write our motion?
To make a motion that we continue this case pending additional information from the Mackies and the village officials involved. And schedule as soon as possible thereafter. I just gotta write that down. So it's open in zero seconds?
Second. Let's, let's get the wording down. Continue case pending added information from village officials, such as building official.
I'll read it out here in a second.
You actually don't need to put all that in because then if there was something else that you forgot or you didn't put it in the, in your motion, we can't go there. Just say, continue pending...
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't want to get too...
Right, don't get it detailed in the motion.
Continue the case pending additional information from village officials. Mackie and village officials. I'll read it again in a second. It's a tough part of it about being the secretary and then trying to talk and then gonna write all this stuff. Okay, so my motion is to continue this case pending additional information from the appellate, from appellate Mackie and village officials. You guys are technically called the appellate. And you support it. Is that good? Is it good with the...
Sounds great. All is in favor? All is opposed? Eyes have it.
So that was all in favor? Want to give these guys a chance for final comments or...
Sure. Yeah, do you have any comments to make?
Sorry for the confusion. No, no, I just, we wouldn't have never done it if we didn't get that, the okay.
No, we don't think we signed the permit.
We would not have gone against anything. We love living on Main Street and whatever, so it just didn't, didn't break the rules. He always lets me that I'm a rule follower, I get badge, a line police badge and all that stuff. He just called, he told him what we're doing, he said, okay, go for it. And it was, and unfortunately, because he does this, it was up in a day. It was up in a day, you know, and then, you know.
I can appreciate it. You got, you got a job and you're not sitting around waiting for stuff to happen. It's bam, it's up. Okay, now moving on to that stuff. Just, just as you and I talked about though, it's, I know how it kind of works. This is a case where, you know, things didn't work out, now it's gotten clouded. And so that site plan is the, is the key because we would have probably dried our feet, taken too long, it would have yelled at us, but it would have been all put on paper and then would have worked itself out there. Okay.
We're gonna go into more approval of minutes for the last meeting. Then we'll come back to public comments too.
Are you welcome to stay or, or go at this point, folks?
We have approval of the minutes for the semi annual...
I wouldn't want your jobs. We have open positions if you are...
No, I'm good. There's a seat open right now. I'm good. As soon as I get out of it.
Yeah.
How you doing?
I'm good.
Good night, thank you. Anybody have...
No, I'm not. I didn't even put my chicken away.
Oh my God, thank you.
If we're all all right then, I make the motion to approve minutes of the November, November 30th, 2023, regular zoning ordinance presented.
Do we have a second? Move in second.
And let's approve, approve, approve minutes.
Any comments? But move in second, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Eyes have it. Any more citizen comments? More comments?
Yeah, so Dennis, we talked about this. One of the things that I mentioned to him before the meeting was, I'm ticked off I was that we, we sent out notices to...
Well, we were given a specific set of information that led us to believe this was all intentional, it was something regardless of what the ordinances were. And he has proof in hand that that's not a fact.
Well, so, yeah, so...
You guys are discussing the public hearing outside the public hearing. You should have, you guys should have discussed all of this inside the public hearing. You're continuing your...
Are we still on camera?
Yeah.
No, this is a, it's a, this is a bit of a different issue. So the issue is, is that we sent a couple of weeks ago, because I, I wrote them up and Dennis approved them when we sent out to the people that were involved in this so we could get information. And it was due, the statement for record with their side of the story was all due last Thursday to be witnessed by the village clerk. So four letters went out, I don't have one letter.
Well, that, that's the point I was getting at is that we have no information moving.
Well, and so they come to the meeting then and they say, look at these, look at these text messages.
I don't understand why we don't have anything from the building inspector. They said they originally spoke with the code enforcer.
Right, so...
Should we, when the letters went out for this meeting, should they...
Should we, when the letters went out for this meeting, should they have said, well, we have text information? Do you want us to print that up? Not already, you have it or us have it, private meeting?
We probably could have asked if they had, well, we could have probably asked in advance if they had corroborating information, but they brought it, they brought it.
I think they think the text messages that they just sent to Dennis is sufficient. They should have something in writing.
They think that's a permit.
Right.
I mean, well, so, Mike, we could have, we could have asked them, but the, the strong indication, and they did bring something with them, which they are, they're perfectly able to do, and on the other hand, we had asked village officials for some things and we didn't get anything. And now, I gotta tell you, I'm disturbed and have been disturbed by this notion that, yeah, just go to the ZBA. No, we're the last place you wanna go.
We're all in compliance with that, we're filling in the bill.
These guys should not be directing people, well, just go to the ZBA and they'll clear it up. That is not the process.
Building enforcement.
And, and I don't, I don't know what Gary did, and I don't know what Tom did, but they should not be approving stuff without following the process. It's why the process is there.
And we have to follow the process.
Our typical, our typical process in the building department is, you wanna build something, you bring in a sketch, or you bring in a blueprint, and we look at that and it's approved, fill in application, and issue a permit.
If we don't stick to the process, then we're just enabling everything that happened before.
Right.
Or they're having to happen again.
People say, well, they got away with it. They drive by, look ahead, go, wow.
Their issue is right on the property.
But everybody keeps skipping over it, that Gary said, I like it, you know?
Oh, when he took, when?
But he said, go get a permit. And they just didn't.
Absolutely.
That's the bottom line, I think Don hit it right on the head that that's what we go by. You pulled the permit, we go through your paperwork here, and they didn't do any of it.
And they would have said right then and there, you're too close to the property line, you either gotta bring it back or you can't build it.
So the guy's fence next door is right on the property line, too. So their argument would have been, well, his fence is right on the property line, why can't mine be in that little gap of property?
Fence obstruction.
No, his is at, his is six, his is six inches in.
His is six inches in, but, but the, yeah, there's a, there's a lot going on here. First of all, they did it in a rush and there was, there was not time to go through the process, but.
Yeah, he dropped the gun.
Was it their fault, or was it because the building inspector might have said, yeah, it's all good, go ahead and do it, and then, and then the proverbial poop hit the fan, you remember I'm on camera? And the poop hit the fan, and, and then all of a sudden, it's everybody backtracking. So if, you know, so Dennis is right, I mean, should have followed the process, but if we don't follow our own process and we tacitly approve them, so the first thing they should have said is, stop now.
Well, and he's a builder.
I, I got it, but you, you heard what he said, oh yeah, we, we do this kinda stuff all the time, I talk to the building inspector. And I, and I don't doubt it that that happens. And most of the time, there's not an issue that comes into play. Here, there's clearly an issue, and the building inspector, who were paying to do the, and stay on top of it, is, you know, winking and nodding, I, I don't know.
If you look, if you look at it, though, on its face, it should have just been denied.
It should have been denied.
But is this really hardship for them? Or is it, are we here to defend our building inspector? We're not really, that's up to the village council. It comes to say, are we gonna interpret the ordinance the way it was written and say, okay, it's out of ordinance, deny it?
Not to village council.
Not to, yeah.
But it's not our, our problem to, to beat up on a building inspector.
No, no.
That's a village problem.
But this is, this is where it goes back to.
We have to redirect.
Why some of this is important, because I expressed my displeasure to Dennis, and I feel we need to write letter number two. The last letter was, hey, some of you guys are taking entirely too long to fix, you know, to decide on this stuff, and you're letting it clunk around, and in this case, it's been a year and a quarter, and they're just now getting a decision? They should have had the decision within a month, no, it's wrong, take it down. That should have been the end of it.
Why didn't Gary just say that? When? They said, they talked to him on the fifteenth, construction went up and was up on the sixteenth.
That's a great question.
And so after that.
Until we get that.
Yeah.
Until we get that.
Wish I had an answer to that.
And Gary said, stop.
Well, that's exactly why we need to talk to them.
Right.
And if you wanna view these text messages, then view the text messages, but until then, we're just sitting here and we're doing more he said, she said. I think we need to gather the information that you've requested and take it from there.
Because they.
And she indicated that all of her approvals from him was through phone calls, and we have those phone calls. They taped it. How do you get?
She said text message.
No, she said phone call. And I'm thinking, man, I'm not very text savvy, but I don't know how you could prove a phone call.
Yeah, well.
So you can.
I would, I would say.
Just call the NSA.
That's a new report on Carmedia.
I would say they should provide whatever info they have, but it just, and I would have, I would have been the most, probably was the most vocal that day, this is cut and dried, because as I, as I talked to a few people, I didn't talk to everybody in the case, but I talked to a couple, and, and it was that Tom clearly knew that he should have put in a permit. Well, he's not denying that. Put, put in for a site plan to get a permit, and he's not denying that.
No, he said he stalled. He admitted that he stalled, I'm getting.
He never got one.
I understand that. He was told to get one, and he admitted that he stalled, he just didn't even bother.
Well, one of the things I was asking for was this timeline of events, because it's not clear. He's saying, I started, you know, I gave Gary stuff on the fourteenth, and then on the, you know, and he was, yep, you're good, go ahead.
But in that same conversation, there was that go up and get a permit.
Yeah. The text message or the permit?
Well, and that, and that may be the, that may be the deciding.
Factor.
Piece, and it could be that, that, yeah, Gary comes back in and says, yeah, yeah, this, it looks good, but get a permit first. I wanna, I'd like to see that in writing now, and it just, and again, I expected all of that stuff last Thursday, we asked for it several weeks ago to be done by Thursday, mostly because anybody that comes here for an appeal, if they don't like our answer, they can go up to circuit court, and I just wanted that paperwork in our back pocket because it seemed like it was cut and dried, but now if they've got text messages, and again, this, this was very sloppy on part of several people. They should have said, no, you're in violation, you need to take it down. Stop building, take it down, do your site plan. There, there should be no ifs, ands, or buts about it, and, and we put the ifs, ands, or buts in there, and now it gets to this issue of, well, is it something that we did improperly on our side that gave them the impression they could go ahead and do it?
But not on paper. Not on paper, not following the standard.
And would Gary? Gary would have investigated it further, had they pulled the permit and included some type of a site plan, drawing something.
I got you, but then, but then the, the day after it was up, he, he should have gone over and said, this is, you, no, this is wrong, you can't do it. And they didn't, and they didn't do it. Then it's, go, go talk to the code enforcer, go talk to the, go talk to the village council president, go talk, take it up to the ZBA. That's not how it works. And so internally, we're screwing it up even more. They should have been definitive, because they've got, the building inspector's got the authority to give approval or denial, and the code enforcer's got the ability to write tickets. So he should have wrote tickets a long time ago to take it down, and the building inspector should have said a long time ago, take it down, and anybody else that they talked to should have said, get it back into the proper channel for adjudication, which is building inspector code enforcer, not come on into the village council and talk to the council as, as he did, you know?
Well, just as Dennis did with their second story, that was out of compliance. Dennis got right on them, they took it down.
They had to step it in, away from Kings Hall.
Yeah, so.
So.
That's why I asked the question, can you move it back six feet?
Right, 'cause.
What was your answer? Well, no, not.
So, but, so they know that that option's there, because they complied with it when you put it in the condition.
Yeah, it, yes, it, it won't work for what they wanna do, but that's their problem, you know, the, what I'm trying to determine now is, did we, the village officials kinda give them the green light and not be definitive about, it's wrong, take it down?
But that argument is, do we badmouth the building official, you know, because he made a mistake, or back him up, or say, well, okay, well, he made a mistake, well, we're gonna let you have it.
But you can't.
You know, that's not really the way we should do it.
Oh, no, I got you, but on the other hand, if, if we don't have our own process down and we've given the green light to somebody, and we've allowed it to sit out there for a year, how do you go back? And so, again, say, say we say no, and we said, we say no, they have the ability to take it up to the circuit court, and then the circuit court's gonna do, they're gonna ask the same questions we're asking, and as I say, one of the tenants of zoning law is, if there's a big cabable, you usually find in favor of the person that's appealing.
I, I think Don hit it right on the head. Does, I mean, Gary looked at it, it's beautiful, he liked it, go get a permit. They didn't. They dropped the ball and started right into construction. The next day, they admitted the next day, they didn't take that time the next day to go get a permit up here.
Well, the village, the village was closed, and then it was the weekend, and I don't know what, so.
Well, that's, we've got the next step, so.
Yeah, well, so the.
Hopefully we get something back soon. What is today, maybe the first tomorrow? Hopefully in the next week or so, we can get some information, get it written out.
Yeah, well, so here's the, here's the big thing, you know, so the question to Dennis was, we really can't let the four individuals who we sent write their recollection, their statement of record, we can't let them not write that.
They need to.
We directed them to do it. It's in the zoning ordinance, it says, we have the ability to direct them to do it. We directed them to do it, they haven't done it. So that's, again, that's the village again, you know, that is in error in this case, and we need to rectify that. So we, whether, whether we talk to these individuals directly, which I think we probably need to do, because writing a letter apparently hasn't worked to get their attention, they need to write their recollection, they should, they don't need to swear in front of Michelle, but she needs to, she needs to request the word, I'm looking for, notarizer or something that she's got it, and, and they, an official statement, and then we get those four statements, and we get their information, we're gonna have to take a look at that and.
So who's gonna, who's gonna call Gary and everybody?
Well.
I mean, I've got his number, I can call him, too, and ask him, but.
I'd say.
Say, do your statement in.
You've got the big shoulders, you, you, you would need to talk to those four individuals that we sent the letter to and say.
Gary and who's the fourth?
Dave. And say, you guys don't, you don't have an option here, you know, we've got the authority to direct you, and we did, and now you guys are, I don't wanna say they're blowing us off, but, you know, we don't have our letters, and we need that now, because they've got something, whether it amounts to enough to, to give them a pass on it or not, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
Isn't this all down to that, that ZBA? Doesn't really have anything to do with this at all?
No, well, no, we do, I mean, we're the, we're the last.
Procedure would have been followed a year and a quarter ago. It would have been fine.
Yeah.
Well, you can't deny the applicant their due process to do that.
Well, I know, but I mean, if.
They didn't follow the, they didn't follow the procedure, but if, if we, if we, if we didn't push them to follow the process, right, and give, and give it an opportunity to correct them, we didn't do it, and then we sat on it, is that enough to let them keep it? I don't, I don't know. It all, I think it all comes back to that first couple of days. You know, and chain on us because we didn't, we didn't deal with it on month two, three, four, five, you know, twelve, but in the end, we're the ZBA, so that wasn't us, we just have to deal with. No, 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 it wasn't, it wasn't us, but now we're dealing with the fact that they didn't do, all of these people didn't do what they were supposed to do. And so how do you make a decision that stands up without getting additional information? We should have had those statements by now. Again, I didn't, we're gonna enter in, into the record that I sent you guys, because frankly, everything I had heard was, this is, they didn't, they didn't pull a permit, it's pretty cut and dried, but if they had, if, if, you know, the building inspector and the appellate were talking, communicating, and there was an understanding, go ahead, go ahead and do it, and get your permit in at some point. So, you know, I, I, we, that, that conversation should never have.
Even at some point, they didn't.
Right. You're right, I mean, we may take it down to ground zero plus one second, they, they didn't follow the process, but if they called.
Right from the beginning.
If they called the building inspector, he shouldn't, he should have said, put a site plan in, period. Not, the draw's okay.
Once he gets the, the permit application, so, and that's what he's reviewing. He didn't get one. We didn't get a permit.
Well, he, he, he said he was, he was, they described what they were gonna do, and he said, yeah, it's, it's good, just, you know.
That's not the way it works.
Which is not the way it works.
And is that what was said?
I've got a text from Gary, this only board, he's a signed copy from you. I get this to move. We want, you need, yeah, Gary and, I'm just sending this to Gary, right, that's all I have, I don't have Dave's number.
Tom, I'm texting Tom.
But we wanna, we wanna, we wanna go to.
Gary's the biggest one, about what led up to the Mackey.
Yeah, he needs to.
To the Mackey carport.
Yeah, what, what approvals and permissions did he give him? And you can tell him that he needs to, he needs to provide some, some gusto to his comments, because they've got emails, so, you know, which I don't know what they, I don't know what all the emails say, but it.
They're texts, right?
Text messages. Well, they said they had emails, too. I, I don't know what they got. Like I say, it's just, yeah, it's our job to interpret or to follow the ordinance, determine whether or not hardship exists that gives, that allows them a variance from the ordinance, or, you know, to determine if there's an error in interpretation, and I, we've, we've had an error at one point that I recall, we've had several people that have, have various hardships or material difficulties, and we've, we've given it to them, right? But it's for good reasons, and so in this case, the error in interpretation, as I say, is with quotes around it, but if we've given tacit approval, it's okay to go ahead without following through, where's your site plan, you know? Again, yeah, yeah, he put it up so quick, and, but building inspector should know, you do not, don't do that kinda stuff, it always bites us when you just give this, yeah, yeah, go ahead. So we, yeah. Okay, well, so, okay, I, I was gonna suggest we send letters or contacts, Dennis is doing that, we, we do wanna get the other through.
I'll find out for Becky what Tom's email or text numbers.
And so they need to follow through with those letters.
I think I have it, Dennis.
You have Tom's?
And they need to do it quick, let me know what help you need from me.
Yeah, I'll, I'll. Yeah, I'll, I'll send it out to you.
That was the, that was the comment that I had, is we gotta address that, and.
I wrote him very important, you know, to Gary, so we'll see our response.
Okay.
Do we have any other comments? Anybody? Can we say enough tonight? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
A second. Moving the second in, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, at 8:31.